We're going to call the meeting to order. Before we hear the cases, we have a, I have to read a statement concerning how the board operates, so bear with me. This is a public hearing, and we are the zoning board of adjustments for Putnam County, Florida. We operate under the authority of Articles 11 and 12 of the Land Development Code as amended. The primary responsibility of the board is to hear and decide appeals challenging final determinations made by the Planning and Development Services Department under the Land Development Code, and to hear and act upon requests for variances, special use permits, non-conforming use determinations, and preliminary development plans under the Land Development Code. A variance is a relaxation of the requirements of the zoning code in a particular case where, because of unusual circumstances, a literal enforcement of our zoning code would result in undue or unnecessary hardship. The zoning code permits us to authorize variances only for height, size of structure, size of yards, and open spaces. If we grant a variance, we may impose reasonable condition on the use of the property, which must be satisfied if the variance is to remain valid. The standards we use in deciding whether or not to grant a variance are listed in Section 45-833 of the Land Development Code. A special use permit is special permission to use property in a fashion which the zoning classification of the property does not automatically permit. If we grant a special use permit, we may impose reasonable conditions on the use of the property, which must be satisfied if the special use permit is to remain valid. Unlike a change in the zoning classification, as a general rule, a special use permit applies only to the specific use requested in the application for a special use permit. The standards we use in deciding whether or not to grant a special use permit are listed in Section 45-1083 of the Land Development Code. Procedurally, we will call each case by name and number. A member of the staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will then take any comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. Please direct all comments and statements to the board and not to other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, come forward to the lectern, and identify his or herself by name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the board. This motion will be voted on by board members and become our final order. Any decision made by this board can be appealed to the circuit court. However, any appeal must be filed within 30 days after the Board of Adjustment has rendered the final order which is being appealed. Are there any questions? Before the first case is heard, all those wishing to speak today need to be sworn in, so will the notary please administer the oath. Jenny, the people are not standing. Okay, if you're going to speak, you need to stand and raise your right hand. I think Mr. Tewillinger sort of stood up a little later. Okay, before we hear from Zach today, we need to have a roll call for ex parte communication. And so the first case of this ex parte communication will be the special use permit 22-007. So there'll be a roll call for the ex parte communication for that case.
No.
No.
No. Okay. Ready for report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. This is a special use permit application, case number SUP 22-007.
Okay, Zach, we're having difficulty, I'm having difficulty hearing you.
Is that better?
That's better, so far.
Would you like me to restart at all?
Madam Chair, before we start, let me ask Mr. Ballengee a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Oh, okay.
Earl, who did you speak with in particular? Who did you speak with? And when was that? What did your conversation entail? Did you discuss her application? Did you discuss her application? You did not? All right, thank you, sir. Please.
Madam Chair, did you want me to restart from the top?
Yeah, go ahead and start all over again.
Okay, no problem. So for the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. This is an application for a special use permit, case number SUP 22-007. The applicants are Rebecca and Emma Shurum. The location is, there's an error in my PowerPoint, it's 109 Melrose Landing Boulevard, Hawthorne, Florida, 32640. Parcel ID is 02-10-23-1860-0060-0010. Parcel is approximately 5.51 acres, located on the south side of Melrose Landing Boulevard, approximately a quarter mile east of Baden Powell Road. The future land use for the property is agriculture. The zoning district for the property is agriculture. Land Development Code, Section 45-72, Pren E, Pren 8, requires a special use permit for a kennel in the ag zoning district. LDC Section 45-183 provides a definition of a kennel, as well as supplemental regulations for the defined use. The proposed kennel will be required to meet all applicable requirements of LDC Section 45-183 and conditions applied to the special use permit. Here you have an aerial image showing parcel and surrounding properties. Here you can see the zoning map for the subject parcel, as well as surrounding properties. Future land use map for the subject and surrounding properties. Special flood hazard map for the surrounding and subject property. And a wetlands map for the subject and surrounding properties. I've also taken the liberty to include a picture of the privacy fence that's along the front property line. This was a speaking point in my staff report, in order to comply with fence uniformity requirements of the Land Development Code, and based on the applicant-supplied narrative that a fence would be installed to buffer the noise of barking. This is the fence that they have on the front, so either this fence or one that is compatible to it shall be placed on all four property lines. I've also have here two different site plans. It's important to note that the site plan on the left is the plan that provides the proposed location of the dog kennel. I don't remember all values. The one of concern would be that western property line. It's 110 feet drawn to scale. The site plan number two, on the right side of the screen, shows an encroachment of 76.5 feet. So one of the requirements is that that kennel be 100 feet from any adjacent property boundary line, so that is an error on this one. But the right site plan shows, you know, the other structures on the site, the proposed parking area, the fence types, which the fence types were cropped out on this image, but it is in the staff report supplied to you, I believe it's page 18 of that staff report. So per Section 45-1083 of the Land Development Code, the zoning board of adjustment is to evaluate the application and make a determination based on specific findings of fact provided to you in the staff report. Those criteria have been addressed in the staff report, and the responses are available in the SUP case folder. So conclusion and recommendation. The applicant has requested a special use permit to allow a dog kennel in the ag zoning district. The proposed use is consistent with the ag zoning district and the agriculture future land use designation. The proposed kennel meets the issuance criteria for a special use permit in the ag zoning district. Therefore, the request is hereby recommended for approval, subject to the following conditions. One, obtain Development Review Committee, DRC, review and approval. Two, obtain and maintain any applicable county, state, or federal licenses and registrations. Three, dogs associated with the proposed kennel operation shall be confined to the insulated and enclosed kennel from 30 minutes prior to sunset until 30 minutes after sunrise. Four, hours of operation for which citizens can purchase dogs shall be limited from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. As required by LDC Section 45-183B3, the kennel operator shall at a minimum dispose of animal waste in a manner approved by the Florida Department of Health. Six, waste disposal shall occur on a daily basis to prevent the accumulation of filth and to prevent odors and pests from carrying on to neighboring properties. Seven, the proposed insulated and enclosed dog kennel shall obtain permits from the Putnam County Building Department before the use can commence. Eight, at least 10 feet of existing vegetation along all boundary lines of the subject parcel shall be retained while the proposed use is in existence in order to buffer and screen the proposed use from adjacent property owners. Nine, the privacy fence shall be appropriately installed and maintained along all boundary lines of the subject parcel while the proposed use is in existence in order to buffer and screen the proposed use from adjacent property owners. Finally, 10, any intensification of the use by adding to the proposed 320 square foot enclosure, or by offering boarding and/or grooming services to other citizens, requires an additional special use permit to determine if the possible additions may affect the proposed use. And before I answer any questions, that red folder item that I passed out prior to starting the hearing with those two emails, we do not know the location of those residents, and in one case even really their given name, so I can't confirm where they live in conjunction to this proposed use. But because they were sent in to me, it being public record, I thought it necessary to provide you all with those copies. So their claims, or opposition, or whatever you want to call it, may hold no weight, you know, if they live in East Palatka.
Okay, any questions to Zach? Linda.
The proposed kennel you showed on the right-hand picture being 76 and 1/2 feet from the property line, and you said it was supposed to be 100. Is the drawing correct?
So that second drawing is incorrect for that location. The image on the left side of the screen, which I have up, that site plan shows the kennel at 110 feet from the western boundary line. It's drawn to scale where each of those blocks equal 20 feet. So I counted them all out. All of the other property lines are of no concern, they're well over 100 feet. That one is 110 feet. After we received that site plan, we asked for more information, such as, you know, screening and buffering requirements, parking spaces, additional structures, and the septic and drain field for the site. So that second one that they sent in shows the other information, and it just has the error on the setback location for that west property line.
Thank you. Uh, Zach, I have a question concerning on number nine. When you said a privacy fence shall be, you put installed into that condition, which is not in our paperwork. So clarification on the fences. I know in the front is that nice metal fence, and then on the side, what I could see was like field fencing. Are they going to enclose those sides as far as permanent fencing, or board, or anything like that?
Yeah, so that is a scrivener's error in both the staff report and on the PowerPoint I provided today. I meant to include installed. So in their narrative that they provided, they stated that fencing would be on all boundary lines to buffer the barking. So the field fences, the chain-linked fences that exist cannot buffer, you know, the barking noises. So in reading their narrative, it's believed that they are going to install some sort of a mitigating, a noise mitigating fence. Now, whether it's the same one that they have on that front property line, it's up to the director's discretion to approve a fence that's compatible. So if they wanted to do a six-foot board on board, a four-foot board on board, a six-foot dog year, whatever the case may be, vinyl fence, they can do that, as long as it is a compatible material, color, and fence type.
Okay. Any other questions from board? Thank you. Before we hear from the applicant, let's do a site visit roll call, please. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Okay. With the applicants Rebecca and Emma, is it Shurum? Like to come forward and address the board? The applicants? Are you, would you like to come forward to the podium and address the board? For the record, please state, where's the mic there? Oh, it's down there?
It's bent down.
For the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Rebecca Shurum, 109 Melrose Landing Boulevard, Hawthorne, 326.
Pull the mic a little bit closer to you, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Would you like to give us a little bit more detail, and then what the staff report, or say, have anything to say?
Well, I guess what I have to say is, I've been breeding for 10 years in a different state, and I'm finally home, glad to be here. I have been kind of blown away at how difficult it is to be able to breed. I am a recent veteran's widow, and this is my income. Now, I feel that some community members may be against that being as your business. But I just want to say, we are not a puppy mill, we will never be. We do things right, all of our dogs are registered, they're all fed well, and taken care of emotionally, physically, and we're a team that does that every day. I just feel like it's very important to be a good steward to what the Lord gives you. So I get that the ordinances and things are to be against those, and I certainly am as well. I am a very small breeder, and I plan to keep it that way.
Okay, I noticed that, and there's nothing stating the number of dogs on the premises at any one given time. Is that not necessary to be in there? Or who's going to police that?
So it would have been a good bit of information in hindsight to acquire from the applicants. All we have was the square footage of the enclosure, 320 square feet. I looked at some different websites, there's really no minimum or maximum designation for a confined space for one dog, so it's hard to say how many. But perhaps the applicant can elaborate on the proposed number of dogs at any given time?
I would have 12 or less.
Twelve or less?
Yes.
Kind of hard to say, isn't it? If they have a litter of 10, are they considered?
No, the litter isn't considered your breeding dogs, not as far as I know.
Oh, just for breeding dogs, and you have to specify?
Right, breeding dogs is 12.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Fisher.
What breed are they?
Cavalier King Charles, mini poodles, and I do have some medium poodles, but those are not going to be around.
Madam Chair, just, excuse me, Madam Chair, let me remind the board members, please use your microphone, so we make sure it's taken down correctly.
Yeah, I know, the sound system in here is not the best in the world, so now you do-
I understand, but please, you got to use the microphone.
E?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's ringing. I might have not been close enough.
Okay. That, yeah, answer her question? I answered your, okay. Any other comments from the board? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else in attendance wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this application? No one's coming forward. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Shane Bryant. My address is 110 Dewdrop Way, Hawthorne, Florida. It's approximately a mile, two mile and a quarter from where this kennel will be located.
You're across the street?
About a mile down the road.
You're a mile down the road, okay.
Yes, ma'am. We're two miles from the boy scout camp. The boy scout camp is on the other side of the kennel from where our house is at. And our concern would be for the noise and the lighting. I realize you're saying that they're going to do some buffering for the barking, but we're out in a rural area, and sound carries quite well at night. In the summer, when the boy scouts are present, we can hear them doing their chants and songs from the camp, you know, and they're two miles from our house, and this kennel would be just over half that distance. The other concern would be lighting. I don't know what the lighting is going to be like. We moved out there in 2008 because it's nice and dark and it's quiet, and we'd kind of like it to stay that way. 320 square feet sounds like a fairly small enclosure for 12 breeding dogs, to me. If they've got it buffered where it's quiet, then I think that's fine. But if they, I think what they should have done is they should have asked if they're going to get the special use permit before they started investing the money in the property, as opposed to starting it and then saying, oh, wait, we have to get the permit, and now we'd like you to give it to us because we already started. So I'm speaking as, also as the president of the Melrose Area Property Owners Association, which is the HOA that's out there. This property's not included in it, but it's right next to it.
So there is an HOA for that?
There is an HOA. At the current time, the declarations and restricted covenants have been suspended due to the Markable Record Title Act. We're in the process of trying to revitalize with the EO at this time.
Okay, so your HOA is suspended, so it's not in effect right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any questions from board? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may too, I just wanted to remind the audience that the proposed kennel is going to be insulated and enclosed, and that the dogs, one of the conditions is one of the, is that the dogs will be contained in that insulated enclosed kennel from 30 minutes prior to sunset until 30 minutes after sunrise. So ideally, there shouldn't be any noise concerns at night if they're in this.
Only in the daytime, then?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak in opposition of this application?
Karen Bryant, 110 Dewdrop Way, Hawthorne, Florida, 32640. I noticed on the drawing that it has to be 100 feet from the boundary line of the next property. What's the distance from the house to that particular thing? On the drawing, it was only 40 feet. Is that about?
You're talking about their residence to the house? Is there a stipulation that it has to be so far away?
I mean, three feet is what's required for accessory structures on someone, three feet.
How much?
Is what's required. Now, the fire department for like a commercial building or mixed residential would be a 10-foot separation.
Okay. But that's not including an animal structure? With animals, it's usually further distance from the house.
You're correct. I mean, it's, so the Land Development Code doesn't specify how far the kennel has to be from the residence. Within 45-183B3, it simply states 100 foot from the adjacent property line or residence of other ownership.
Okay. All right, the other thing is noise. He's saying that they'll be put into this kennel at night. There's people around that work night shift, that are up during, I mean, sleeping during the day. With a metal enclosed fencing, it's going to make more of a noise than I would see, rather than buffering it. I think this needs to be in a business district, not in a residential area.
Any questions for Mrs. Bryant? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak in opposition of this application? Okay, no one else is coming forward, so at this time, we will close the meeting to the public and open it up for board motion and discussion. Nobody wants to discuss? We got to have a motion before we can discuss it.
Do the dogs have a fenced-in area that they could run around in during the day, or is it going to be the entire property?
Okay, I tell you what, if you're going to ask that question, even though we closed it, Mrs. Shurum, would you like to come forward and answer that and be a part of the record?
Yes, ma'am. The five acres is fenced completely. I am sure that that happened. Now, three sides of it is my neighbors, and I was hoping to not have the expense of, you know, doing my own fence. But if that's what is required, then certainly I will do that. My dogs, I had, the reason I have the older, the larger poodles that I am selling is because he's a barker. But the rest of them rarely bark.
Okay, that's not the question. Linda, would you like to repeat your question?
My question is, during the daytime, do all the dogs have the run of the entire five acres? Or are they going to have a private fenced-in area? I mean, it can be chain-linked, but, or whatever.
They will have dog runs, and we let them out a couple of hours, you know, in several different dogs. You can't let them all out at the same time.
But they'll have the run of the entire five acres during the daytime?
But not all at one time?
Right.
Any other questions?
Because of breeding, you have to be careful, you know, who breeds with who, so you have to only let out certain orders at certain times.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, let's go back to asking for a motion and a vote and discussion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve special use permit 20-
Madam Chair, I move that we approve special use permit 22-007. As request meets the criteria of a special use permit required by section 25-45-1083 of Land Development Code, and will be ten conditions recommended by staff, and authorize the chair to sign the final order.
Ms. Hoga. We have a motion and second to approve special use permit 22-007. Any further discussion? If not, all of those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All right, motion, all opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Just for reference, there is a thirty-day appeal process, so if there's any issues or concerns, make sure you work closely with staff. And good luck in your endeavor.
Madam Chair, one question. With the approval of those conditions, do you give us the range to make that change for the fence about installed and maintained?
Oh, we didn't, okay, somebody should have brought that up before we voted on this, from the standpoint of inserting the install part. So, huh? No, no, install. He asked about the number, I think it's eight or nine, where he put install?
It should have read installed, but I left that part out as an error.
Right, so, Mr. Perry, you want to jump in here and tell us?
Madam Chair, you can either, you can go back and take another vote if you'd like. It'll be fine, since staff pointed out that there was a, I'm sure it was just a scribbler's error, but anyway, you can make, put that on the record that it's supposed to be part of it, and you can vote again if you'd like.
So we can vote, I mean, we can add that number nine has been changed to say installed, rather than having to go back and vote the entire?
Well, you can, yeah. That'd be fine too, if it's understood, that the board understood that was supposed to be what it was, as opposed to-
Okay, all right. So in number nine, you want to read exactly how it was stated in your report, which was not in our report?
Give me one moment. Okay, so for the record, condition number nine shall have read, "The privacy fence shall be installed and appropriately maintained along all boundary lines of the subject parcel while the proposed use is in existence in order to buffer and screen the proposed use from adjacent property owners."
Okay, so you are not allowing the applicant to use any of the existing fences that are on the three sides, other than what she has put up in the front?
If-
Okay, so she's going to have to do her own fencing?
If those fences are of privacy fencing, then yes, she can use what's existing. But if it's all chain link and no climb, then she would have to add her own privacy fencing.
Okay, another question. Did you inform the applicant that that was part of the, one of her requirements?
I made that phone call to her this morning before the SUP case. I tried to send it to her via email, the whole staff report, and it was too large to send via email. So I made the phone call and explained to her that the fencing would have to go around all four privacy fencing, whether it be board-on-board, dog ear, four foot, six foot-
But not the existing fencing that's there, because it is like a field fencing and maybe chain link, I think?
Correct. The whole intent is that it offers noise buffering, and a chain link fence just doesn't do that.
Correct. Okay, you put a clog in this machine, okay. Mrs. Shroom, come back to the podium, please, ma'am. Please state your name again for the record.
Rebecca Shroom.
Okay, I know that you referenced a few minutes ago, you were talking about the fence, if you had to, you would not want to incur that kind of expense, but if that's one of the stipulations that they're going to put in here, are you okay with this?
Do I have a choice?
Obviously not.
I really had thought I-
Madam Chair, if I may.
I had it-
Excuse me, okay, go ahead and finish, and I'll let Zach jump in. Go ahead, Mr. Shroom, finish what you were saying.
I thought I had my dogs secured. We made sure that all the fences were, you know, my son repaired what needed repaired. I don't know that buffering is even a possibility, to be honest with you. And I don't think there's a lot of barking.
Well, you know, everybody's opinion to a lot of barking and a little barking, but from the standpoint of the fencing, you know, the two sides that I saw are strictly like field fencing or wire, you know, there's no, you know, there's no solid fencing on those sides, and I couldn't see the back, so I'm assuming the back is just the same, chain link fencing in the back?
Yes, ma'am. Based on that second staff report that was received, it's all open-
It's all open fencing. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. In the future, I had planned on doing those three. I'm just in the middle of building a home.
I understand that, so, we're in a dilemma, you know. Can you live with this? Is there, are you going to give her a timeframe, that she has to complete the fencing, or before she can do her operation, she has to complete the fencing?
So the LDC gives her five hundred and forty-five days from a determination to commence the project.
How many?
So she had five hundred and forty-five.
Five hundred and forty-five days that she would need to be able to install these fences?
Well, that's to just commence the project, to take it to the next step.
Okay, commence.
So, she's got five hundred and forty-five days, and then it's also, this is staff recommendations, so the board does have the ability to add or change-
Or change.
-any of the conditions placed.
Well, it is financially a burden, and I don't want to be irresponsible. I want to be responsible and do the right thing. I, it was just absolutely shocking to hear that, because I thought I had my ducks in a row. And I, you know, I did meet with Zachary and call him long before I bought this home. So I didn't just, you know, park there and plan on this permit happening. I got my paperwork in, you know, together.
Okay. All right. Who's next?
Zachary. In some, in some instances, buffering on other things, other buildings, restaurants, or other things that we've had, buffering also was called, could be called shrubbery, you know, a shrubbery. Now, she doesn't have perfect fencing, but if she added shrub, you know, a dense shrubbery to that, which could be a whole lot cheaper than fencing, would that satisfy the land development code?
So, the difficult thing with kennels is the intensity can range on them from a small breeding operation to, you know, five hundred kennel boarding operation. So the LDC doesn't define a specific, you know, density or an intensity category for it. At a bare minimum, a ten A buffer is what's, you know, recommended for this project, in which shrubbery could accomplish that. But if we went the shrubbery route, I mean, it'd be ten-foot worth of shrubbery, ten-foot wide, six-foot tall worth of shrubbery along all four or all three property lines.
I do have dense woods. I have lots and lots of trees and underbrush, you know, especially around the border of the property, because we're not using them. So there already is that buffer, and I have no plans on cutting any of that.
And another issue is the fence uniformity regulation of the zoning ordinance, where it states that on all four boundary lines or on all boundary lines, the fence shall be uniform in materials, colors, heights, so on and so forth. The director has the discretion to waiver from that, but it has to be compatible in some way.
Compatible as in the material or compat, you said color, material? I don't, I mean, the front fence looks fantastic, so I don't, I mean, it had to be expensive to start with, so, you know, that could not be imposed upon her to do the entire perimeter of her property.
Right, and I'm not making the recommendation that the entire perimeter of the property be that type of fence, but it is, it needs to be somewhat compatible. I mean, if you've got the privacy fence like they do out front, and then just the chain link down the sides and the rear, it's kind of hard to say that that's compatible.
Okay.
So she doesn't-
Madam Chair, if I may add to Zach's statement. So the director has the ability in the code to waive that requirement of uniformity. So she wants us to put up a wood fence, that can be allowed, and we plan on working with her with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that fence up front's very nice, me and Zach visited inside, but we can, we have the ability to waive that requirement of requiring that same fence down all sides. So, we do plan on working with the applicant, however, these provisions are in place, and she's going beyond her capacity to, to, you know, mitigate potential impacts on surrounding properties, mostly noise. So we do plan on working with her on that, and if we have that ability to waive that requirement, we certainly will.
Okay, the five hundred and forty-five days, that's basically a year and a half, eighteen months, or something like that, that she has to commence the project? Is there a deadline to finish?
There's no established deadline to complete the project, it just states that it has to commence within five-
In eighteen months, she has to, had started?
Correct.
Okay.
But in the meantime, I can't breed, and so I have no income.
Now, that's, I don't think that's, is that, that's not, that's not holding you up from breeding?
I mean, the SUP is to allow her to breed.
Right, so that, the fencing would have nothing to do with your ability to breed the dogs?
That would be wonderful.
All right, you can live with that, then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, one more question.
This may have already been answered. She has five acres?
Yeah.
Five and a half. Five and a half. Does she have to fence the whole five acres with that kind of fence? If she weren't, could she bring it in?
And fence the kennel?
Yeah, and, you know, I have more acres. I don't have all my acres fenced, you know. I have horses and all, you know, fence, you fence thirty of the five acres, you know. Does she have to fence the whole?
So the intent would be to fence the area in which the dogs can run. And I know she expressed that there would be, you know, a specific dog runs, and then throughout periods of the day, groups of dogs would have the whole run on the property. So, to me, if she's going to let the dogs have the whole run on the property, then the whole property should be fenced.
Right, but if you limit, but if she limits where the dogs would be running free and fence in the compound as far as the dog kennel itself, then can she do that, rather than fencing the entire perimeter of her property?
I don't see why not. If she wanted to leave it as like one acre for total dog run and put a privacy fence around that one acre, that'd be fine.
Would that help?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Perry, you want to, is there, since we've already voted to approve this, do we go back and start all over again, or do we just-
Madam Chair, let me, let me ask Zach. Zach, did you point out, I don't have an agenda in front of me, so I can't look at what you're looking at, but did you point out this particular condition, the right condition to the board prior to the vote?
He did state that, I questioned him on the fact that you did say install. So that was not in the original nine conditions?
It was not in the original nine-
The word install was not, but he, when he did his report, he did say install.
And, Mr. Perry, I don't have the staff report in front of me either, but one of the criteria for a special use permit is appropriate buffering and screening. And within that excerpt of the criteria, I did elaborate on, you know, the applicant-supplied narrative indicates, you know, mitigated fencing for buffering purposes.
Okay, well, Zach and Madam Chair, the reason I asked the question is, what's important here is that the board actually understands what they're voting for. And if you explain that, then, then they understood that their vote was a contingent upon this particular corrected stipulation. I mean, do you, am I making any sense?
We got you, I got you.
And Madam Chair, I'll ask you, is that the point we are at right now? That the board did have that information before they voted?
The board did have it before they voted.
Okay, well, in that case, as long as the board knows what they're voting for, then the vote can stand.
Okay.
If there's some kind of confusion, as the chair, you can go back and take another vote.
Okay, because it does say installed and appropriately maintained along all boundary lines of the subject parcel while the proposed use is in existence in order to buffer and screen the proposed use from adjacent property owners. So with that, it does say the entire piece of property. That's the way I'm reading it, correct, guys?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I guess we're back to the entire piece of property has to be fenced?
Yeah, Madam Chair, my add, the final development order that is to be signed will reflect those changes. You will see those.
Okay.
I have a question. There is a stipulation, one of the rules is to have a parking lot area. I don't have customers come on my property.
That, that's not an issue with us, because it wasn't part of the recommendations or anything, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't think about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Don't open that kennel. Okay, I guess we are going to let it stand, that she realizes also that she has five hundred and forty-five days to begin the project to fence in the perimeter of her property. So I guess the vote, Mr. Perry, will stand as-
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I guess we can move on. Okay, before we hear the next case, it's variance 23-001. We need to do an ex parte communication roll call. No, an ex parte communication?
Oh, I'm sorry. No.
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 Okay, Mr. Joseph, you ready?
Moving forward. Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. Good afternoon. For the record, Joseph Sealy, planning and development. This is agenda item number two. It's a non-residential variance 23-001. The variance is from the applicant Clyde B. Till Wooliger, from Blue Water Bay Cafe, location 319 State Road 26. It is a .36 acre parcel that is currently zone commercial. The future land use is also commercial. The request is to expansion of a covered outdoor seating area to encroach to the front setback, and the reduction would be from thirty-five feet to 1.6 feet. It's also important to note that that .36 acre parcel is not, there's two other parcels where the parking takes place, so the intent is to move the parking area away from the front and discontinue backing movements onto, I believe, State Road 26, and which will provide for a much safer parking area and put the parking, or put the seating area out in the front. So the covered seating area, I believe, is approximately eight hundred and sixty-four square feet. It will be located close to the road. However, along this area, there is an intersection, looking at the aerial, directly to the east, so you're not getting much tra, like, I guess, high-speed traffic through this area. What I will say is a lot of progressive planning, and what they do is they pull the park, or pull the, reduce the front setbacks and pull the building up to the front to provide for a more, it's more of a traffic calming device, and it's common in planning. So, I mean, there are pros and cons to this. As you can see, the future land use is commercial, surrounded by commercial, this is a commercial corridor. It's not uncommon for building- It's not uncommon for buildings to be pulled up to the front of the road. And zoning is also commercial. Staff has recommended approval of this. I know it seems like, you know, a, a, a pretty intense request, however, it is a common practice in planning to pull these buildings up front. It will be an outdoor seating area that's to be covered. It will remove parking from the front facade of the structure. And currently, we did do a site visit. Currently, there is parking in the front, and there is backing movement onto that roadway. This will eliminate that, omit that, and the parking, they have enough parking on the side in those other two parcels that would accommodate any type of parking they need. Other than that, yeah, staff's recommended approval of this, and I think they, I believe they meet five out of the six criteria. However, staff recommends approval, this is a legislative decision, so ultimately, it is up to this, this board if we do move forward with this. But if you have any questions, I'm here, and I believe the applicant is here as well to answer any questions.
One question from me.
Sure.
I'm assuming then the ha, the retaining wall, half retaining wall, will go up to the sidewalk, or a little bit back from the sidewalk?
That was a condition, I believe Zach conditioned.
I didn't see it, I didn't-
Zach, are you able to answer that question?
Didn't specifically say the sidewalk.
I meant to ask him before I got here, but we were running a little shy on time.
That was my question, too. What's the question?
There, there is a sidewalk in front of, well, I mean, all the way down in, in, on twenty-six on both sides. My question is, I'm assuming that the retaining wall, or the half knee wall, whatever you want to call it, will go up to the sidewalk, but not encroach onto the sidewalk?
Correct, so, I believe the sidewalk is in the right of way, and the proposed encroachment is one point six foot from the front property line.
From the front property line, so the front property line then would start at the edge of the sidewalk?
Probably, I mean, we didn't survey it when we were there, so we don't know exactly where that front property line lies in conjunction with the sidewalk. But, yeah, we would assume that there's probably a foot on the other side of the sidewalk where the right of way is.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, it couldn't be placed in the right of way, it's, I believe it's an FDOT right of way.
Correct.
And so, they, yeah, they wouldn't, they'd have to get permitting for that, which we wouldn't allow either, so.
Well, I get, maybe the applicant can answer that question, because
Sure.
I have, you know, I would have a problem if it encroached into the sidewalk personally.
Right.
So, okay.
So, exactly how close to the highway are people going to be sitting?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
So, exactly how close to twenty-six will people be sitting?
I mean, upon, upon a site visit, um, did you, did you do a, were you able to do a site visit? Um, I believe it wouldn't be further than the frontward edge of the sidewalk. I don't know that, I believe that's FDOT right of way, I don't think they could put it beyond that sidewalk. So, it'd be probably adjacent to the inward edge of the sidewalk.
Parallel then to the sidewalk.
The applicant can answer that as well, I mean, obviously, yeah.
Any other questions from staff? Okay, before we hear from the applicant, let's do a site visit roll call, then?
No.
Yes.
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 Okay, Mr. Terwilliger, would you like to come up and address the board? And for your record, please indicate, and give us your name and address.
Uh, Madam Chair, I don't, have you been sworn in?
Yes, he sort of, he sort of did it at the- At the last minute.
Clyde Byron Terwilliger, three nineteen State Road twenty-six, Melrose. This variance we're asking for is a combination of a lot of things. Our average customer, he's thirty-six years old, and, uh, people come in with special needs dogs.
Okay, um, we need to talk into the mic a little bit better, because it, we're having difficult hearing you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Or up the, up the amperage on the voice.
We, uh, are trying to accommodate people with special needs dogs. Many of our customers have not come back at the restaurant and are buying to-go foods. They don't want to sit inside. That's what all this is about. The, uh, extension does not increase our seating, it's not intended to. Uh, it's back away from the sidewalk, no encroachment over the sidewalk.
Okay.
Period. Uh, and basically, uh, that's the gist of it. You've got more than enough parking for three times our seating capacity. So, that's not a problem either. One of the problems that the awning would take care of is, is the fact that people are backing in and out of those small places on the twenty-six, and the traffic is crazy coming from the end of the twenty-six. I think DOD is addressing that, but I thought also was not ever making a parking area again. So, that's the other part of the awning.
Okay, so you answered my questions, it will not encroach on the sidewalk?
Not a bit.
Any other questions?
One question, is this going to be a stronger retaining wall, stronger to keep cars out?
Absolutely, on the outside. We've got to level the entire front of it and even it out for handicap people. And it'll be a thick barrier on the roadside, so it won't get any chance to get in.
What kind of, uh, is it going to be an awning, vital awning, or a structure there?
It's a, a product that's made in Lake Butler, Florida. It's a hundred percent synthetic, and it looks like a roof that the Seminoles would have done. Comes out beautiful, and it's a lifetime warranty. The engineering for the roof is coming for the people of COVID. So, it's, it's very impressive looking.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Terwilliger.
Thank you, thank all of you.
Okay, um, at this time, anyone in the audience wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this application? No one's coming forward, okay, I think we have, uh, we have a speaker card. Patty Christensen is, uh, wishing to come forward and speak in opposition. Okay, for the record, set your name and address.
Patty Ann Christensen, P.O. Box three oh six, Melrose.
Okay, can you give us a nine one one address, because that P.O. Box gets crowded?
I would prefer not to, I have, uh, on the public records-
Oh, okay, okay.
And blocks, so-
All right, thank you.
Yes, okay. First, I would like to say thank you to all the people on the board for your service. I'd also like to say thank you to Mr. Terwilliger for his service of the best food in Melrose. I, uh, am opposed to this, and it's nothing personal to the applicant. But I think the, uh, having a canopy, uh, as he stated in his application, uh, is an awning, I think he said. I think the issue is bigger than that. And I, there's three reasons that I oppose this. One is I don't believe it's a hardship. Two, I have the issue of creeping improvements. And three, I think it's bad precedent. The, um, the ordinance says that, ordinance code, uh, section forty-five point eight three three says that each of the following, uh, must be met. And as the staff said, it's, uh, five out of six have been met. Uh, it also says, which I think is probably the operative element here, that, uh, denial of the, um, these are the considerations that must be met. Denial of the application would deprive the owner of rights enjoyed by other properties and would cause unnecessary or undue hardship. I'm not sure if I've really heard anything about hardship. He was talking about having service dogs and, um, people in wheelchairs that be, have, will have better access. But Mr. Terwilliger owns two lots west of his, of his, um, of the restaurant, and there would be ample room there to, uh, have outdoor seating. I think outdoor seating is a great idea, I don't, I don't oppose that at all, but it's the location. I don't think COVID is any longer a threat, I don't know of any places, um, closed because of COVID or, or restricted. And, um, the, um, I just have an issue that I don't think he's shown through substantive competent evidence that there is a hardship. The other two lots is almost two hundred feet, or around two hundred feet, uh, that he could have to put the extension on. Also, the creeping improvement, the second thing I have a consideration on, is that his application says that he wants to, uh, construction of an awning, outside awning. He's explained what, uh, the property, what the, uh, what it's made of, but then you get put in the retaining wall, and then before you know it, he's going to want to put in, if it's windy or cold, he's going to want to put some, something down, whether it's plastic or glass. And so, basically, uh, before you know it, it's going to be a true extension of the building. It's not going to be just outdoor seating, that's what I would anticipate. Also, the thing about the bad precedent is this basically would put you at a zero setback line. And I don't know of any property in Melrose that has that. I know that it's not a, a reason for people to come before you and say, well, he got it, now I want it. Uh, that's not necessarily valid, it's case by case. But, um, you know, Melrose is historic, and I, I really would like to see it stay historic as far as the streetscape goes. I, as far as that parking goes, parking issue, I don't know why they couldn't just put posts down and tell people to, prevent people from parking there. The, I was on this board, uh, for two years, back in the twenty eighteen nineties, I mean nineteen nineties, and, uh, and I've been a member of Historic Melrose forever. I've been, uh, on the board there, and I, I am currently a director, uh, emeritus. And so, uh, my consideration is the future of Melrose, uh, that, you know, if one person gets this, the next one's going to want it, the next one's going to want it. And, uh, it just seems like for the streetscape, it would be better to have at least some kind of uniformity. And, uh, hopefully that, you know, if Chappini's sells, which it is up for sale, that the new owner, if they take out the gas tanks, that they want to go up to the zero lot line? So, at any rate, and it's really, uh, I'm, I'm sorry to have to come up and, and say this, because I love Byron, and, uh, his restaurant is wonderful. It is our, as I said, uh, our treasure, our town treasure. But I wish that you would consider the bigger picture on this, because, um, it, he, he has room to put an outdoor, uh, place there. And, um, you know, it's, I just think for the historic value of the town that this should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, uh, any questions, board? Okay. I guess not. Okay, uh, anyone else wishing to come forward and speak in opposition of this application? Okay, this time, no one's coming forward, so if there's nothing else, we will close it to the public and open it up for board motion and discussion. Oh, you got a question, okay.
Yeah, Chair, if, if they were to move forward with enclosing that, to alleviate any concerns with enclosing that or turning that into a permanent structure, they would have to go through our development review committee. And that's pretty much, we, we send these out, the plans out to all the departments and review them. So, we would be aware of it, and at that point, they would have to revisit this entire procedure. So, could they just do it on their own? No. Will we permit it? No. They'd have to go through a variance procedure probably again to enclose it. This is to allow outdoor seating area not to add to the, even though it does add to their square footage. If they were to enclose it, they would have to go through our development review committee, and we would, we would discuss it then.
Well, I know that during COVID, there was an awning and outdoor seating place in that area at that time. And then whenever COVID, there were a lot of restrictions, the out, the outdoor seating was removed.
And, and just to bring to your attention, I, I've pulled up the aerial. This town was built, you know, back in the, I think, the fifties, probably earlier than that. A lot of your older towns have their buildings pulled up to the front, so that it does two things. It, it's, it's traffic calming, um, people don't drive fast through that. Not only that, but they, also it provides window shopping, so to speak. So, the marketability of these restaurants and stores, you know, it's, the effort becomes more, I guess, in plain view. So, this is not an uncommon design, or site design, this has been going on since the fifties and sixties, to pull everything up to the front. If you've been down West King Street and St. Augustine, you've probably seen all the buildings pulled up to the front. That's how they were designed, because there, it's an older town. So, it is a progressive and common practice in planning to pull these buildings up to the front and, and, uh, put seating up front. Now, this is, they don't meet all of the criteria, they meet five out of six. So, this is a legislative decision, so ultimately, it is up to the board. If, could it be contested in court or appealed? Absolutely. But ultimately, it's up to this board to make that decision.
Any other questions? Mr. Smith? Oh, okay.
Let's just, let's just hope there's no smoking.
Okay, any other comments, any questions? Okay, still going to call for a motion and discussion.
Madam Chair, I move we approve variance twenty-three dash zero 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 one. As it meets the criteria for variance as requested required by section forty-five eighty-three of the Department of Land Management. With the condition recommended by staff and authorized, the chair will sign the final order.
I second. Uh, we have a motion and second to approve variance twenty-three dash zero zero one. Any further discussion? If not, all of those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Terwilliger, there is a thirty-day appeal process, so if there's any issues or concerns, please work closely with staff. And good luck. All right. The next thing is the minutes for January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, has everybody had a chance to read them? Oh, Jenny, they said take draft off of it, maybe at the top, put draft, because it's hard to read them. All right.
I make a motion to approve.
Uh, we have a motion and second to approve the minutes for January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Anything else to come before the board today?
Madam Chair, did you discuss any, if there's any new business or old business?
Oh, no, I didn't, I said anything else to come-